The February 22nd, 2021 Regular Wasilla City Council Meeting is called to order. The time is 6:00 PM. Before we begin, council, please put away cell phones. If you have personal business to attend to during the meeting, please move for a recess. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Rousa.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Bernie.
Here.
Councilmember Vlach.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
You do have a quorum, Madam Mayor, with councilmembers Rousa, Johnson, Vlach, and Brown in person, councilmembers Bernie and Harvey participating with us telephonically. Also on the line is City Attorney Holly Wells.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Jordan, would you lead us?
Sure will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item of business is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes? Hearing none, the agenda will stand as presented. Yeah, that's next. Under special orders of the day, it is with a sad heart I speak of the passing of Katie Hurley. Katie was an original great Alaskan. Here are just a few of her accomplishments. She was the first woman to win a statewide election, president of the State Board of Education, executive director of the Alaska Women's Commission. She was in Pioneers of Alaska, League of Women Voters, Family Community Leadership Project, and of course, she was chief clerk for the Constitutional Convention and statehood transitional staff to Governor William A. Egan. Please join me in a moment of silence as we remember Katie Hurley. The next up is Commission and Agencies Report. The Wasilla Airshow Advisory Committee. Mr. Giddings.
Yes, ma'am. The committee met last week with two new members. They had a very productive meeting getting those two members up to speed and trying to see what their strengths are. We got a former firefighter who's taken on the safety role, and then we got Mr. Larson.
Mark.
He's involved in all kinds of things in the community, so he's going to help out. He's going to be a tremendous asset, and everything's moving forward. They're trying to get their scheduled events laid out, and they're fundraising and seeing where those opportunities are.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is public hearings. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's Ordinance Serial Number 2104, amending the fiscal year 2021 budget by appropriating $245,000 from the Water Fund fund balance for the Ranch subdivision water quality investigation.
The public hearing on Ordinance Serial Number 20-04 is open. Anyone who would like to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance Serial Number 21-04?
They're moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
It's been moved by Councilmember Harvey and seconded by Councilmember Vlach. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember else here? I just had some, I was wondering if we could get maybe a brief on this real quick from Mr. Giddings. I'm curious, there's a lot of money on today's agenda pointing at the ranch water system, and so I was just hoping to get kind of a, your commentary. Thank you.
Yes, sir, through the mayor. So we've got hard water in the system, and it seems to show up as a problem, more so in the ranch. Now, it's about 25% of our customers are in this service area that we're going to be analyzing. The results are going to be useful for the entire system because we have pockets of cloudy water at times throughout the city. It'll show up in this building if there's fire hydrant run, for instance, in the summer when it's tested, but it seems to be worse down there. And like I said, it's 20, it's, there's over 400 customers. It's 25% of our customer base, so it is a big effort. We want to get a handle on it. We've got to figure out what's in the water more specifically and see how we can mitigate it. Our highest number of complaints is in that area.
Thank you. And just being a new council member still, I probably considered myself that for a couple of years unfortunately, but is this ordinance number 2104 simply moving money to fund the things in our action memorandum? Is that, am I looking at that right? Or could somebody explain that to me? Thank you.
Yes, sir, through the mayor. That's correct. So this is money being appropriated out of the Water Fund fund balance, and it's going to fund the two contracts that are listed later on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Is there further discussion? Are you ready for the question? Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote on the adoption of Ordinance Serial Number 21-04.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Rousa.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bernie.
Yes.
Councilmember Vlach.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
The motion to adopt Ordinance Serial Number 2104 passes unanimously with councilmembers Rousa, Johnson, Bernie, Vlach, Brown, and Harvey in favor.
Okay, we are on to 7.2, which is persons to be heard. And there's nobody. Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Stu Graham. I'm a resident of the city of Wasilla and proud to be a resident, and I've been a resident for many years. First off, I'd like to congratulate Councilmember Rousa. That was an excellent question and follow-up. You know, being on the council, understanding how money is moved and where it comes from and why it's moved is drastically important, and the only way to find that out is to ask those questions. So congratulations on asking that. Secondly, I wanted to talk about COVID-19. And I watch the COVID numbers, you know, not closely, but I watch them with interest to find out what's going on in our community and other communities. And for the past several weeks, Matzoo is a hotspot. And it's just not a hotspot, it's the hotspot for the state in COVID-19. For instance, today, the email from DHSS, they were covering three days, which was February 19th through the 21st, said Anchorage had 74 cases of COVID over those three days. And as you know, Anchorage is about 330,000 people. Wasilla had 65 cases, and in the area that they're counting as Wasilla, it's probably about 55,000 people. Palmer had 22, other places in the Matzoo had three. So that's a total of 88 cases in an area of about 105,000 people. So if you go to Anchorage, you have about a .02% chance of being exposed to COVID, you know, from somebody who, like me, is not wearing a mask right now, and unlike me who has COVID right now. So being exposed to that, you have about a .02% chance. If you just come to the Matzoo, that chance is about .08%. And if you come to Wasilla, it's over 1%. So I'm not suggesting or requesting, don't get me wrong, that we introduce a mask mandate or anything like that, but I'm just saying, we just need to be careful. You know, we need to be respectful of our friends and our neighbors and our coworkers. And, you know, if people want you to wear a mask, wear a mask, you know? If you don't want to wear a mask, you know, that's great, but if you're in somebody's business and they ask you to wear a mask, let's stay open for business, let's cut this rate down. And last, on my list here, I've got about 30 seconds to go. Item 10.2 is a discussion and consideration and possible action regarding development of future COVID-19 relief and recovery grant program. The way this has worked in the past is the administration has brought forward a proposal, the city council kicks it around and says, yeah, let's move that proposal forward. And then when they move the proposal forward, then they, everybody gets upset and says, well, why are we discussing it two weeks down the road when we already talked about it the day before? I'm asking you to keep that discussion open so business owners and concerned community members can come in and talk about that. So don't approve a program tonight, but approve the ability to move a program forward so business owners have the opportunity to participate. Obviously, COVID has got my tongue, so thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council at this time? Okay. Madam Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Items for approval under our consent agenda this evening are the regular meeting minutes of February 8th and the special meeting minutes of February 10th, 2021. We have no introductions or resolutions up for approval. We do have four action memorandums. The first is AM Number 2110, a word of a one-year contract to Holiday Station Stores in the amount of $91,706 for the purchase of unleaded gasoline and fleet fuel card services for the remainder of fiscal year 2021, and $73,928 for fiscal year 2022. AM Number 2111, contract extension to Sand Tech Consulting Engineers in the amount of $174,200 for the Ranch subdivision water quality investigation. AM Number 2112, contract extension to ARS Alleyoot Analytical in the amount of $70,200 for the Ranch subdivision water quality investigation laboratory services. And lastly, AM Number 2113, contract extension to Big Dipper Construction in the amount of $62,000 for the wastewater treatment plant outfall improvements project.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read into the record.
Is there a second?
Second, Councilmember Johnson.
It's been moved by Councilmember Harvey and seconded by Councilmember Johnson to approve the consent agenda as read. Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. There is no unfinished business this evening. New business, 10.1. There has been no new action taken, and therefore, we'll be moving to the next item of business. Madam Clerk, please read the next item of business.
Thank you. That's discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the development of future COVID-19 relief and recovery grants program for the city of Wasilla in a committee of the whole.
Is there a motion to enter into a committee of the whole?
Councilmember Brown moved the move into committee of the whole.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Brown and seconded by Councilmember Rousa. Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Troy, will you please give us an update?
Madam Mayor, the council, really not a whole lot to update you on as far as dollars go. There hasn't been any material change spent since last council meeting. That being said, as far as Phase 5 goes with the PPE, surprisingly, we've only had 17 applications, and 13 of those are now scheduled for payment, probably go out this week, if not next, probably this week. Total of that's about $65,000. Other than that, we continue to reach out. We've reached out in many, many ways, trying to get the word out. And so I think if you know anybody that's in need of that, please feel free to enlighten them like the rest of us have. Unless there's specific questions, Madam Mayor.
Is there further discussion?
Madam Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Harvey?
I'm just curious if, you said you reached out. I was just looking for some more specifics, if you made any progress with the mortgage assistance or the daycare idea we talked about.
So I have reached out, as I reported before, to AHFC. I continually do that. AHFC, as you can imagine, is pretty busy right now, dealing with their rental assistance side, although I keep the line of communication open for that topic. As far as the childcare, I continually also reach out for that and looking for an entity that would best serve that particular need, if that need does exist, and I have yet to secure that.
And as far as the conversation with the, you said the conversation ongoing with the mortgage assistance, where does that currently stand? Are we just trying to communicate with somebody, see if it's something we're, I mean, we're able to do currently, or will you add with that?
It's more about AHFC having the capacity to provide me the necessary account information, what kind of monetary value we're talking about, you know, what's, what is it that they're seeing from the previous program that they had, that kind of thing. So we kind of need all that information because we have to do an MOA, Memorandum of Agreement, between the two parties, because we're obviously submitting them a chunk of money, whatever that turns out to be, potentially, under certain conditions that they have to honor based on federal requirements.
All right, thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Brown, you talked about reaching out to people who may be in need and educating them on that process. Is it possible to use some of the funds to educate people about the situation, the virus? My day job, I've been watching the numbers, and that's what I do every day, and is there a way that we can put more into just educating people about the virus, about masks, about vaccinations, and how it's affecting the community?
I'm not sure how I could answer that. DHSS continually does that, you know, AHFC, I know it's not necessarily like masks and that sort of things, but the AHFC program that's come down the pike, if you've been on our website under the COVID, we've piggybacked with them to try to help them get their word out to our residents that those abilities are there. I've had residents that I've spoke to that have steered them in that direction, they weren't aware, whatever, and we try to continually do that when and infer that comes available. I mean, certainly those type of things that are available under the CARES Act funding, and we continually do that, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes, lady, it was council. Okay.
Johnson.
Or is mine, I guess. Yes, I was talking to one business owner this last couple of weeks, and he had applied for a grant in the, under the fourth phase, I think it was the fourth phase, and he was turned down. And then he bent my ear as to why he felt that he was justified to that, whereupon I really didn't have a good answer for him, other than the fact that I said, well, you can always appeal this. Unfortunately, he didn't know how to appeal it, and I don't know the answer as to how to appeal it either. So are there, or is there any information as to how a grant application that has been denied may be appealed?
Well, under the, I mean, I would say that the process is closed at this point for that appeal, but at the time when that denial occurred, that certainly could have been brought to my attention. We've had others that have been questioned, brought to my attention, reviewed, either overturned and/or stood on the grounds of its merits. But yeah, that's basically where it starts.
So was that appeal information put out in our brochure for phase, any of the phases? I mean, I just am not that knowledgeable, so you have to sort of educate me in that.
Is that part of the FAQs and whatnot when they, when those applications are applied for?
Thank you. Is there further discussion?
Yeah, quick question. So the way I understand the CARES Act grant funding is that there has to be an emergency declaration still, or is that, what, did you say at a previous meeting that the emergency declaration in Alaska was extended to the end of 2021, or is that, or am I thinking about two different things and kind of get my wires crossed here?
It's, it is two different things. So the emergency declaration that went out there actually triggered the FEMA funding, all right? So the emergency declaration has to be there for the FEMA funding. The CARES Act funding followed that, that portion of it. CARES Act funding, even though it's administered by the feds, actually extended it from December 31st of 20 to December 31st of 21. That CARES Act funding is a federal funding under certain requirements. The disaster declaration wasn't part of that. It was just simply funding for COVID-19 for your community.
If you're clearing that up.
Mayor and council, this is Holly Wells. Is this an appropriate time for me to confirm that as well?
Yes, go ahead, Holly.
All right. So I just want to make very clear, while we don't have a lot of answers, it is my legal opinion that by having a local emergency declaration, which is how the city of Wasilla has structured their emergency declaration, we may be able to protect some of the funds and some of the implications that Troy is walking you through using that local emergency trigger. And so we don't have a lot of answers right at the moment. We are looking into that, and the administration has asked us to make sure we do that, and we will report back as soon as we know more. But we are somewhat optimistic that because of the path you followed and by maintaining that declaration of emergency, your funding may not be at risk like many of the state programs that we're seeing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So businesses for Phase 5, they can only apply for PPE. They can no longer apply for just the grants of, you know, what through Phase 4 was, is that, that has ended and Phase 5 is just for PPE?
Right now, Phase 5 is just PPE. That's the only one that we've triggered out there right now.
Okay.
That's not to say we can't put another, you know, an extension of Phase 5, if you will, out there for SB grants. We did the PPE grant. We didn't get a lot of information from individuals. As a matter of fact, people were returning funds, but we didn't get a lot of information from businesses as to need, whereas we did with PPE. And so the thought behind this was to get that money out for PPE, and frankly speaking, I thought I was going to have a lot more than just 17 applications at this point, and give us time to watch this go through. In the meantime, be able to communicate with those businesses as they process these PPE applications, to ask them these questions, and then hopefully come back and open up an SB grant if that really determined the need. I mean, the resources to put a grant program on are extensive, right? So we want to make sure that we can get the best bang out there when we do that, so.
Have we done any mailers to just individual businesses, you know, who have a business line?
On the front end, we did that, and we did a lot. We've done mailing and social media and radio and Mayor's Minutes and websites and, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So on the topic of getting information out there, and I feel like I brought up mailers. So you said that we've done, we did that at the beginning of it, but it's been a while and additional programs available. Would it be possible to get more mailers sent out? It's my understanding that's something that we can possibly use COVID's funds to pay for, is that correct?
Yeah, COVID fund, COVID funds can be used to get that word out. We've done three mailers. I'm trying to think the dates, but nonetheless, anyway, I think we've done three mailers thus far.
And were those mailers just to businesses, or do we put it out, mailers out for all the programs we've had?
We put it out for businesses because that's, the programs are targeted to businesses.
So in the past, we've done, you know, additional programs like the Mortgage Assistance Program and, so if, in the future, if we do something like that, I would like to see mailers put out with that as well for city residents.
Mortgage Assistance was programmed through AHFC, so we were contracted with AHFC, and then we helped to get the word out from them as well, because they had the scoop to get to the landlords and the renters.
Correct, but that was fund that was provided by the city of Wasilla, correct?
To AHFC.
Yeah, but it's still money that's being sent out to our residents. So I imagine the future, any program we would have would be probably partnered with someone, if not them. I would still like to see, you know, it's to our part to get the information out there, especially if we can use the COVID funds to pay for that.
Is there further?
Also, when we talk about radios, what radio stations do we advertise on?
Ms. Carden.
Through the mayor, currently, we're on country, out here in the Matzoo, we're on Country Classic and Q99.7 and KNLT. In Anchorage, we're on two adult contemporary move-in, I'm sorry, don't have all of them at the front of me, but the four are adult hip-hop, easy listening, and talk radio.
So there's any stations that we advertise that give our programs that the city of Wasilla had in the past, or just ones we advertise on in general?
Both, the ones we've had in the past, and we run anywhere between 25 and 38 spots per day on all of those radio stations.
All right, sounds good. So I just, I mean, it sounds like we're hitting all the marks on the radio stations. I mean, expanding to more listened to stations, but other than that, we're still pretty good at those. I would just really like to see if any future programs, there'll be more mailers. I just feel that, you know, we, I know we are, not saying that we're not working hard to get the information out there. I know I've seen it come across through this Facebook page, it's on the website. I'm going to reach out to businesses that I feel that we can do more to get the information out there.
Is there a further discussion?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rousa, so, so it sounds like the word's getting out. It's pretty surprising. It sounds like, you know, it's 17 applications, the advertising probably costs more than the, than the funds that were actually distributed to, you know, to provide the equipment. And I guess what I'm wondering, and this goes, this is a question for everybody in the room, I think, you know, each of us exists outside of this room in our own isolated communities with certain groups of people. The one that I'm in in particular, you know, I don't see a whole lot of need, but I'm wondering, where is the need? Does anybody know an area of need? And why, why is the grant, like the Phase 5? And why, why is the grant, like the Phase Five grant, not providing assistance enough to meet that need to generate more than seventeen applications, I guess, you know? It's offering, you know, Plexiglas and masks and gloves and things. What else is there? What are the needs, if there are any, that we could be hitting with that application when we put it out, hoping that people are going to respond, proving their need, and we can use the grant to help them? And as for anybody, I'm just curious if anybody's got any ideas on pockets where the needs are not being met? You know, maybe it is income. Ms. Veloc mentioned it. You know, it's just PPE right now. It's not, you know, loss of income for businesses that are forced to be closed or operate at a reduced capacity. So I'm wondering if anybody knows of any of those types of needs that are still existing in our community?
The only thing I can, I can say to that is the CARES Act funding specifically addresses revenue replacement, and it cannot replace revenue. It has to be, it can be used for rents or PPE or utilities, things that, you know, keep you going. But it's certainly not to replace your revenue. So the need aspect of a business revenue is viewed to make sure that we can see and understand the business impact from COVID that can certainly substantiate the federal funds that we then distribute to that business. But it's not for revenue replacement. The other things that, that funding does, it specifically addresses an entity's public safety, first responders, the labor that they produce over this period of time, to reimburse that municipality for those first responders. And not just from our own PPE, but those things that a municipality has to deal with, with its residents and its public and whatnot to keep them safe, that may not be necessarily PPE, but keep, it might be something that has to create six-foot distancing or, or the things like we went through the election and they had to deal with specific things to address those. So there's, there's a number of those things that are addressed from the CARES Act funding, but there's many things that municipalities have continually tried to think of that we could use CARES Act funding for, and the feds have come back and said, no, you can't do that.
Okay, is there further discussion? Is there a motion to exit the committee of the whole?
So move.
Madam Mayor, before we, at the. I just ask that we continue to keep this on the agenda. Sorry, I tried to chime in before there was a motion. I was just trying to say that, before we act, that I just wanted to ask that, that we continue to keep this on future agendas.
Through, through the chair, is that the will of the body? Does the body want to see this on agendas moving forward? Any objection?
No.
Will do, thank you.
Okay.
I'm going to add back to the motion.
Okay, the motion has been made by Councilmember Johnson and seconded by Councilmember Harvey to exit the committee of the whole. Is there an objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next on the agenda is communications. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the item under communications.
Thank you, we just have one, Madam Mayor. It's IM number 2103, monthly financial reports for the period ending January 31st, 2021, to include the month-to-date expenditure report and disbursements greater than $10,000.
Are there questions from the Council? No questions, so next on the agenda is audience comments. You've got three minutes. Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the Council. My name is Stu Graham. I am a resident of Wasilla, but right now I'm here speaking as a representative of MTA, the Mountain Telephone Association, which is your telecom co-op here in the valley. And I just wanted to bring up something that's coming down the pipeline, trying to get ahead of things, so to speak, and that's ten-digit dialing. You know, right now, when you dial a local phone number, you dial seven digits and you get connected to that local number. If you want to do a long-distance number, then you dial one plus area code plus those seven digits. Well, starting in April of this year, April 24th of this year, ten-digit dialing nationwide will be a thing. And the reason they're doing that is because the FCC, at the direction of Congress, has established the National Suicide Prevention Hotline, which means that starting, I think, in August, if you dial 988, it will connect you directly to the National Suicide Prevention Hotline. Well, you know, that's kind of a problem because a lot of telephone companies throughout the United States have phone numbers that start with 988. So in the infinite wisdom of the federal government, they've decided that everybody should do ten-digit dialing. So for us to dial local numbers, we would dial, you know, 907 and then whatever that number is to go forward. But, and that will start in April. But you'll actually have until October to actually have to do that. Unless, of course, you live in June or you're dialing one of those 988 numbers, because then in August, it's going to start connecting you to that National Suicide Prevention Hotline. So I just wanted to let you know that. I know that the previous administration had talked about replacing the phone system here in the building. Not just here in the building, but throughout the city. So if you're going to do that, and MTA doesn't sell phone systems, so I'm not trying to sell you a phone system, but if you're going to do that, think about doing that before you have to pay somebody to come in and reprogram your existing phone system for the ten-digit dialing and go from there. And before anybody says, well, that blasted Joe Biden, here's some other stupid thing he came up with. This has been in the works for years. This has nothing to do with the current federal administration. This is something that's been in the works probably for five or 10 years. So this has nothing to do with the current administration. We can blame ourselves for this one. And, you know, suicide prevention is a, or suicide is a huge problem in the nation, and this suicide prevention hotline will be a great help nationally and a great help locally as well. But anyway, with that, thank you for the time.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address the Council at this time? Hearing nobody. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder to Councilmembers Johnson, Brown, and Rousa. Orientation tomorrow, 10:00 AM here at City Hall. If you can make it, that would be great, and we'll see you all here for our next regular meeting, March 8th.
Madam Attorney.
Madam Mayor, I have no comment.
Councilmember Rousa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's good to hear that there's so very little need left in our community as a result of COVID. Seems like things are relatively well, despite some of the grim comments that Mr. Graham mentioned earlier. Seems like at least the businesses are doing well and the city's doing well and people are relatively strong, and I'm definitely thankful for that. For the things that the COVID grant funds can't reach, I believe that prayer can reach those needs. And I think that we should all remain in prayer for our fellow citizens and remain prayerful for the people that are in need, that are beyond the reach of the government and otherwise. And I'm certainly remaining personally in prayer for those that are in need in this time. Beyond that, we had mentioned a public safety meeting, and I'd like to keep, keep some focus on that. I'd like to, you know, I'd like to advance that to the point where we actually meet sometime. And Ms. Newman might have a.
Go ahead, Jane. Thank you, yes. We have one scheduled, March 16th.
Oh.
6:00 PM.
Thank you. I'm sure you already emailed me and told me, okay.
And it's on our civic web calendar. It's being noticed, so.
Okay, great, so.
It's on, we're on.
March 16th, everybody be there. Well, I don't know, whoever she invited, okay. Otherwise, yeah, thank you. Great meeting, appreciate it.
Councilmember Barney.
I'd like to echo those remarks. I, I am really proud of this community and the position we put ourselves in. I would challenge the administration to really look at the rental, the rental businesses and the leaseurs to see if there's still an opportunity there. But I got to tell you, having traveled a lot around the state, I am really proud of the city of Wasilla and what we've been able to do. So I think that goes to each and every one of us, including the administration and everybody involved. So I give them thank you, and I just hope we can, we can stay in such a great position. Thanks, guys.
Councilmember Johnson.
Nothing.
Councilmember Brown.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Veloc.
No comment, Mayor.
Councilmember Harvey.
No comment.
Okay, now it's my turn. As Troy has said, AHFC has got more money than they know what to do with. They are advertising paying rent up to, and possibly through a year. So there's no reason for anybody that's in need that they shouldn't apply. And this, and it also not only includes rent, but utilities. And also the food bank, there's no reason for anybody to be hungry because there's plenty of food out there. We are doing our best to help all of our businesses in this community. And I think that we have done an excellent job doing that with only seventeen applying for PPE. And we even had one of the administration ask this business, well, don't you need PPE? Nope, I'm good, got plenty. So that's where we're at with this. But we do keep a close eye on what's going on in the community and especially with our businesses because that's our mainstay. As far as getting the word out, I don't know what else we can do because we are on all of these radio stations. I know I have had it on the Mayor's Minutes for the last two, three weeks. You know, we picked up another local radio station. They're doing a PSA and we use it. So we're in the frontiersman, we're, you know, I don't know what else we can do. So anyway, I hope everybody has a good couple of weeks. And if there's nothing further to come before this council, the meeting is adjourned at 6:43.
James, over.